David, are you all set?
Me? No.
On Zoom?
Just give me one minute.
Do you need the link?
Okay, we're gonna be one minute just while we set up the Zoom.
Do you need the Zoom link?
I need to just like copy and paste.
Okay, perfect.
I'm not that tech savvy here. Actually type it in.
You know who's really tech savvy is?
It's Murphy's Law. Exactly.
Brian.
And it's seven o'clock.
Yeah, I saw some of the forums that he was coming up with for the ZBA.
Yeah.
That people would go out and could do it online. That's great.
Or... Yeah, and then he could have a determination. Just...I thought it was a great idea.
Yes, it is.
I wasn't that prepared, sorry. And I got the pressure feeling on me.
Take your time.
Take it down.
I know that, but their whole audience that's with them is gonna be upset about my leak.
Very avid.
What an audience. They're talking about me online.
It's making me...this computer, I haven't done Zoom on here in a while, so... Okay, now I can do that. Scan document. Come on. Why aren't you copying? Just wanna put in the ID that'll tell you what the ID is in Zoom. Yeah, that'll work. Uh, the products host joint, okay? All right, what...
909.
909?
174.
174?
03.
03?
47.
Teamwork.
47. Okay.
Makes the dream work.
Good work.
You had, I'd be taking a photo of it and trying to read it and do all that, so... The download should start in a few seconds?
Yeah. Since you don't have the app.
I do have the app.
Do you have the Zoom app?
I thought I did, but who knows?
All right.
Yes, I know, I feel that. Quick downloads. Downloads. Open file. It's a pain, yes. It is.
I bet you if you scroll down, you can click "Join from Browser."
That's all right, I'll just do it anyways. Right? At this point, doesn't matter. Upconnecting, updated service. Updated terms of service, connect. There we go, joined. Turn off my damn, uh, um... My thing. I sure as hell don't want to be online. I don't want to be a video. Stop the video. Okay. All right, boss, we're all set then?
All set, very good.
Let me see if anybody's on. Oh, I don't know if anybody's in the meeting.
Thank you.
You're the host, okay?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lunenburg zoning board.
Recording in progress.
But I'm gonna tell you how the hearing will proceed, but first I have to give you a notification. The hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through a local access cable on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to Zoom Meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. I'd like to introduce you to the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, she's Board Secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, Tony Nacastro, and we have a new member associate starting tonight at the end, Steve Dubois. So we'd like to welcome him. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If anyone from the public wants to, they can come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. Tonight's hearings, both of them, we're gonna have two hearings tonight, 293 Burridge Street and 68 Laurel Lane. They're both for dimensional variation. So beside the special permit findings, we also have to find, for dimensional requirements, the required findings are: The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood in regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Finally, the board may impose any conditions deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of this bylaw. And with that, I would ask Lisa if she would please read the first application.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board Appeals. The name and address of the petitioners are Kurt and Heidi L. Keshuba of 293 Burridge Street in Lunenburg. And the undersigned hereby makes application as follows: To construct and attach three-bay garage. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250-5.2, Setbacks in Yards. The street address is 293 Burridge Street in Lunenburg, assesses map 103, parcel 19. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Kurt and Heidi L. Keshuba. The deed is recorded in the Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 3643, Page 145, and recorded September 29th of 2000. The following additional information is provided because it is considered important to this case. The proposed plan has the least amount of impact to the land environment and is least expensive option. The least amount of impact to the land contours, less trees to be removed and affected, less disturbance to existing driveway and rock wall. And this is dated May 1, 2023, and signed by both Kurt and Heidi Keshuba of 293 Burridge Street. The special permit questions and answers are as follows: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The response: The proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health and will not cause any traffic congestion, fire danger, explosion. It will be used for its intended purpose primarily vehicle storage. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The response: The action will have no adverse action on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. We expect this action will only increase the property value of the land and neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The response: The proposed action will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness and will match the existing dwelling for a streamlined appearance. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the response is: The action in and of itself will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines. And that was submitted by Kurt and Heidi Keshuba. The section of the bylaw that they are referencing is Section 250-5.2, Setbacks in Yards. There is a copy of that. There's a copy of a rendering of what the proposed three-car attached garage will look like, and a site plan, a copy of the septic plan, and a list of abutters who are all notified two weeks prior to tonight, and a sketch of the abutter area. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would...
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. The Board of Health reviewed this today, and they have no issues with regard to the placement of the proposed structure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come up and add whatever you would like. One thing I would like you to do, though. Everything is very small, and I'd like you to go over the...
I've got a big set of drawings.
Very good.
So it's Kurt Keshuba, 293 Burridge Street. I also have a letter from our neighbor Shirley Cox, which is our direct neighbor right next to the house. Just, I figured I'd give you guys...
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, you should.
Excuse me, let me just read it real quick. There's a copy of the hearing notice that was mailed. And I have no issues with Kurt and Heidi Keshuba building a garage next door to me, Shirley Cox, 305 Burridge Street, Lunenburg, Mass., and that's dated today. Thank you.
And is that the house directly to the right of yours if you were looking from the straight?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So, we've been there 22 years. Been waiting for this opportunity to build this garage. So the plans that are set forth in front of you is the plan details. We had an engineering firm give us two different ideas, but this idea is the only one that really kinda makes the most sense.
What I'd like you to do, because you just brought these tonight, is if you would give us what you're looking on for relief, which means the setbacks.
Yes.
And also dimensions of the actual proposed new garage, you know, width, length.
So, the...what we have for the setback is that I have nine foot four inches and five eighths... Sorry, 10 foot four inches and five eighths.
You can't hear.
Can't hear it, you got it.
Unfortunately, you gotta talk to the mic.
I'm sorry, so...
You can bring it with you.
I have approximately 10 feet from the property line.
10 feet?
10 feet.
So you're looking for 15 feet of relief?
Yes.
Should I hold it up, or...?
Yes. So, the proposed drawing is, it is a 36 by 28 garage, three-bay garage. It sits exactly against the house with a walkway through and a pitched roof to join the existing house.
You said 36 by 28?
36 by 28, yes.
Okay.
And where that garage is going, is that where the existing basketball court is right now, like carved into?
No, because the...where I put the existing basketball court is too close to the property.
Okay.
So we had the engineer push it as far back as we can to give as much easement possible. So the 10-foot is the best that we can grab into without going to the hillside. I do have a hillside on the back side that grades up. We did try to put it on top of the hill. The asphalt, the amount of asphalt and cutting that would have to do would have been a lot.
So how far back with that, I'm gonna go landscaping the... Landscape timbers at the end of the driveway? How much further back is the front of that gonna be?
Oh, it actually goes to, so if the timbers are here, it actually goes right to the front of the timbers. So the front of the timbers is, will be even with the garage.
That will be the front of the garage?
That would be the front of the garage, yes.
Okay, so that is, like you're saying, beyond the basketball.
Yep.
Okay.
So yeah, beyond the basketball court.
And that one corner is the 10 feet you're talking?
Yep, the one corner here is 10 feet. It's 10 foot four, 10 feet approximately, so...
Okay, okay.
And is that a registered stamped plan or no?
Uh, this is a plan that I worked for an engineering firm. But, yeah, so Hannigan's...
Hannigan.
Hannigan's Engineering actually did these plans. But I put them on hold until I had this period, so I said, listen, we don't want to go in there.
Right.
He did come up with three options. The options were to set really far back, not going to the hill. The other option was to set behind the house with a lot of asphalt, something like that.
They also tried to turn it sideways.
So that was sideways. So I did give you...I didn't give you all three, but you did three options. It was just the cost, the amount of asphalt, and the amount of trees that we used. Just didn't seem practical.
And looking at the property, it seemed like you have a lot more property on the other side of the house.
Yeah, the septic sits.
Wouldn't make a lot of sense to put it over there.
Yes.
With the driveways on that side of the house.
Hard because the septic, so the septic runs right from this side of the house here, directly over the septic, and it's on a pretty steep hill. So my hill is probably about a, you know, 23-foot hill, depth of hill.
And the neighbor's house is quite a ways away on the other...
Yes, so we got the width between us, and then the driveway, and she goes up, and she's actually set back, I think maybe a little further.
And on the downside, they're way down.
The sunny side is on her side, so she'd only get sun when you're blocking that sun. I know that, we could check that and talk to her. So listen, I want to make this design work for you. We've known her for 22 years, we've known her a long, long time. So we approached her before we were gonna start doing this to make sure she was gonna be okay with it, knowing that I might have some kind of issues here, so...
Yeah. What Hans is referring to, when the building inspector actually has to look and everything, he's gonna have to know, if we grant 15 feet of relief, he's gonna have to know where that is.
Yes, yep. And I don't know, we've been back there, the neighbor back there.
Behind us? I can look and show you who it is. We haven't really officially met him behind us.
But you're obviously seeking relief from the side setback.
Just the side.
Right, from that one side.
The backside, a lot of property on the backside, unfortunately, climbing the pitch.
It's just Shirley's side.
What's the height of it? You don't need any height relief, correct?
I'm actually in the pitch right now, which I think is an eight pitch. So I didn't want to make the pitch look a little...if I lowered the pitch, it would... It would be more... Yeah, we did submit, I don't know if you guys did that, submit?
No.
Yeah, that's in. This is the, this is the actual picture. The existing house is... I cut the house off to fit the drum.
Your house is kinda angled, isn't it?
Yes.
Is that garage gonna follow that same?
Follows, made down toward, so I couldn't get... I wondered if we're trying to do a scrape, or just a way to really enter past it. So we tried, and we shrunk the garage to the common ten. We tried and failed.
Any other questions from the board, Will?
Mr. Chair, the only issue I had with it was that, I mean, I didn't know what they were seeking for relief from that side setback, but that bigger picture resembles this one here. I knew it was 10 feet, so... Is that gonna be okay for the building inspector, like, not...
Well, he said they have another plan, correct?
Yeah.
From Hannigan?
Yeah.
I did get the building inspector as well, before I approached his pro-rata, to say, should I hold off? Maybe this, he said, we're gonna look at this together. He might have put it off here, and I was kind of agreeing with the same thing.
And the neighbor who wrote that is a neighbor that would be impacted by that relief?
Yeah. She's single by herself.
Yeah, okay. I guess my only other question is, you're seeking the relief because it's a three-car garage.
Yeah.
Okay, so you currently have three vehicles that you'll be parking in that?
Yeah, well, that and my SDA just been... The snowing would have bothered me. I waited 22 years to see if it was trucked. So, maybe 22 years or so, I wouldn't have been interested in this, which is different. But, I wish I could have been there.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Again, Mr. Chairman, my only question was gonna be on, you know, the same idea of whether we was able to push it back further. And the applicant mentioned about the hill there. I just can't tell. Obviously, the plans are small, so I can't tell how much of a slope there is up there.
Yes, and I did actually bring the three options that the engineer did. I don't know if you guys seen the three options, but I can certainly...it is hard to see, but...
Would you review the three, because we did not get those options?
Yes, so I...the engineering, this is the first one I did, which was a set it back. The engineer said, you set it back, and becomes a hill. And it actually, you can, 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 you can. I also went through...
Oh, microphone?
I also went through this plan. This was the other plan. It was set behind the house. The problem is the amount of asphalt, and we would be... The engineer said you could put an asphalt driveway all the way against it, but the amount of asphalt to the environment, I didn't like. I said, listen, that's just too much asphalt. I would have to remove the entire driveway and repave it and remove the wall. So I said, I would rather not remove the wall. So I did have three options laid out to try and avoid anything we could do, but it just seemed like the best option was to bring it into this area.
Okay. I would just say that, looking at the property, and the reason I asked about that, the landscape timbers, was because I felt that was about a reasonable pushback as you could get with the contour of the land.
I agree.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? There are none. I will ask for a motion.
Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Anything on Zoom?
Wait me one second, Mr. Chair. There's only one person on Zoom, and if they would like to either raise their hand or go up mute, they can do that. Nope?
Nothing. Any public comment from the public? And it's seeing none. I will now ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit, dimensional variation, for 15 feet as proposed in the plan that the applicant has submitted.
Do I hear a second?
All second.
I have a motion, a second. Who's voting? Oh, you are, Tony, right? Okay.
Discussion.
And with that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. So it is granted.
Thank you.
I do have to read you some post-decision instructions. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days has had elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, good luck with your new garage.
Thank you, everybody. All right.
Okay, we have a second hearing, but it is scheduled for 7:30, so we'll have to wait a few minutes.
The next hearing, they didn't submit with their application the building plans, but they were with the building permit that they submitted online when they found out they had to come in. So I made a couple of copies that you can share.
Yeah, this one, you put it online, so...
Oh, I think I emailed it, I emailed it, but...
Right, because of that. Because it's a function of the... Single-family residential, right? Naturally, it can't.
Yeah. Big house. Big house.
Big house, I'm not involved. I did, I really had my, uh, uh, uh.
Yeah, same.
Okay, it's 7:30, so we can go to our next hearing. Application. I will have Lisa, please read the, uh.
Yes, okay. This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is, is it Schrowen's?
Schrowen's.
Schrowen's Properties LLC, 30 Main Street of, in Air Mass, 01432. And the undersigned hereby appeals as follows, and I'll read the project narrative. On behalf of our client, Schrowen's Property LLC, please find an application for a special permit pursuant to 250 Tech 74B of the Town of Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Is our client's objective to reconstruct a structure on the same footprint of a pre-existing non-conforming building? This proposed reconstruction will not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. Lot 1 is located within the Residence A zoning district containing 18,780 square feet with an existing structure and garage. Lot 1 and 2 were approved by the Town of Lunenburg Planning Board on January 9th, 2023, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, which allows the division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing when subdivision control law went into effect in the Town of Lunenburg. Since the structure already exists on the property, it will not increase the non-conforming nature in regards to the front side rear, rear yard setback requirements. It will be consistent with the property and the neighborhood. It is our intent to receive a special permit for this property based on, upon the current regulations and out, and requirements as outlined in the Town of Lunenburg zoning bylaws. Very truly yours, Kevin R. Conover of David E. Ross Associates, Inc. The proposed action has not begun. The basis of that, this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250, 7.4B. The street address is 68 Laurel Lane, assesses map 99, parcel 35. And the name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case, Schrowen's Property, Properties LLC, 30 Main Street, Air Mass. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 10390, Page 357, and recorded 8/222. And I, they signed copy, May 5th, um, 2023, from Schrowen's Property, I think it says Ashley Owens, um, 30 Main Street, Air Mass. And there's a letter to the board. Please let this correspondence state that the applicant, Schrowen's Property LLC, authorizes David E. Ross Associates, Incorporated, to submit and present the special permit application for the above referenced property on our behalf. If you have any comments or questions regarding the contents of this authorization, please contact the undersigned, Schrowen's Property, Ashley Owens of 30 Main Street in Air Mass. There is also a list of abutters with the, um, application, a site plan prepared by David E. Ross, and you have copies of the building plans, gentlemen. Get a memo from Jim Griffey today. The Board of Health has no issues with this as long as the house at 70 and the new house at 68A and B are connected to municipal sewer. And that's by James Griffey, Health Asian. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
With that, I would invite the applicant to, or the rap to.
Sure. Uh, my, my name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates. Uh, I represent Schrowen's Properties LLC for this project. We are seeking a special permit, as, as outlined in the narrative, uh, for alteration or reconstruction, uh, to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. We are not increasing the footprint of the existing building. Um, uh, as Lisa said, the, uh, the lots were created by an 81L process back in, uh, January this year. Um, in pursuing with conversation with the building inspector, um, he suggested that we, actually, he requested that we get a very special permit from the Board of Appeals for this reconstruction. And I just want to repeat, it's an existing house. We're not increasing the, the footprint of the house and we're not increasing any of the non-conforming nature of the structure. Um, obviously, it's consistent with the neighborhood since it's already there. Uh, it's going to be used for residential use. Um, we've already received, um, conservation approval. Uh, we also already received, um, uh, sewer commission and Board of Health approval from Mr. Griffey. Um, so this is the last phase of the process where we're just looking for a special permit for the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the reason the building inspector, I believe, sent you here was because it, it is a substantial increase, whether it's a duplex?
It is currently not a duplex. It's currently a single family. The property was divided because it had two primary structures, residential structures on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. To be 81L and go to the division of planning board, those structures had to be in existence prior to subdivision control going into effect in the Town of Lunenburg. So these structures were there. It used as residential uses since 1900. I think, um, zoning went into effect in the Town of Lunenburg around 1960, I believe. So these were well before that. So that allowed for the division of the property. When you do an 81L, um, there are, in, in ANR anyway, that you do not certify conformity to zoning anyway. With an 81L, you just divide the property as best you can based upon the existing conditions of, of, of the property. So that's why we came up with that lot division. So the building inspector's interpretation is that we created that non-conformity, which I entirely agree with. That is true. But we didn't have a choice. Uh, that the conditions, existing conditions on the property, Mass state law allows you to do that division. So since we want to reconstruct it, uh, we're not increasing the non-conforming nature, just like Section 250 says, um, we need a special permit from the, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Did that answer your question?
I don't know if you did, because I think he's asking you, you're going from a single family to a duplex, correct?
Well, that's the intention that they're going to do that. Now, that is a by right in this district, so that has got nothing to do with the board tonight. We're just looking for the alteration or reconstruction of it. So it's a by right in this district.
But you're changing, you're going from a single family to a duplex, even if you, you get by right, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board.
So, um, you mentioned that it's, uh, no alterations. The, uh, the height is going to be the same as the existing structure?
Um, I believe it is. I can go up a little bit, but it's still going to be within the zoning requirements.
So, okay.
I mean, can you kind of give me an idea of where, where it is today and where it's going?
You have to come forward to the mic, please.
So currently, I think it's 25 and it's, that's what you said, right?
So it's coming from.
You have to give your name and address, please.
Jamie Schodell, um, 68 Laurel Lane.
Thank you.
Uh, it's going from 25 to 35 feet. I believe the zoning bylaw is 38 feet. Um, and the.
Right.
The concern from the inspector.
But it meets the setbacks, the height setbacks?
Yes.
At, at the 38, I would.
Yes.
Okay.
The inspector's concern was that we're too close to the property line that we've created. It wasn't about the duplex or anything related to the building itself. It was that we created a property line and the boundary is now close to that, so, okay.
So that, so the, the side yard you're talking about is towards number 70, the other house?
The one that we separated from, yes.
Yes, right. And you did create.
We own both of them still, yes.
You own both properties?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, what, what about the driveway? I noticed right now you have one driveway going down, kind of separates. What's the?
Um, well, I guess the intent is to provide enough parking spaces based upon what the building inspector or any of the boards will require for duplex. Um, the, uh, existing driveway, we're not going to change the entrance of it. It'll just probably just have a single driveway. Um, on the ANR plan that we had signed by the planning board, we encompassed that driveway in an easement, um, to give, uh, legal access, uh, from one lot over the other lot. Um, so in terms of parking spaces, they'll be in accordance with the, the zoning requirements.
Okay, so the, just the question, the other property, the other house, 70, which it's, you own both properties?
Let me just correct you. It's 68A and 68B.
Okay.
So.
Do you currently have plans for that house?
Currently, I believe they're living in that house.
Okay.
So, um, in the 81L statute, it, it says that you can divide the properties where two or more buildings, which only one shall remain. So in the event that they want to do any reconstruction to the other one, we'd be back in front of this board, basically looking for the same kind of, um, relief, yeah. In a, in the event that happens. But again, we're just looking at this one lot right now.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I, um, have you, have the building inspector agree the idea that we're not going to a, uh, you know, the, the amount of homes and the amount, on that, on that driveway now? Um, I understand that we're only allowed to have, you know, I would look at this as two homes. With it now becoming a duplex, I have two homes. I'm, I'm concerned with the traffic on the width of the driveway with, to be able to grant this. So I would look that the driveway would have to be double wide, because what are you going to do when somebody's coming down and somebody's trying to come up? Especially if you're going to split it up into another property.
Well, well, again, that's a, um, that's a question for the building inspector, I believe, when you'd apply for the building permit for the duplex. Again, we're here tonight is just to see relief from the setback. In terms of any, um, uh, improvements to the driveway, existing driveway, uh, I believe that would be the building inspector or the DPW that warrant that.
So what, what I'm trying to avoid is the fact that we have to come back here again because the, now that the driveway, you're not allowed to have more than, more than, what I would consider two homes on a single driveway, that we'll now have two homes on a si, we'll now have three homes on a single driveway, even though it's a duplex. But duplex to me is considered as two homes.
I'll let you answer.
Uh, that, that's a good point and, you know, if that comes up with the building inspector or DPW, we'll address that at that time.
Would the planning board do a, uh, site plan review on that or are you, or you already went there?
Uh, we went for the planning board to divide the property. So, uh, we'll seek any permits that are required to make any improvements, alterations, um, uh, parking situations for the driveway. Um, obviously, we'd be, you know, try to be in, uh, we wouldn't, we would be in accordance with any other requirements. Um, so, uh, he's got issue with building permit. More importantly, he's got an issue with occupancy permit. So we'd be in conversation with him to, to see what the best alternatives are.
From the lake, um, what is the setback on that back?
Yeah. So from the back, we have 52 and a half feet.
From the lake?
From the closest corner of the existing house to the high watermark of the lake.
Okay. So you, do, you would have to go to conservation?
We already received conservation approval.
Right.
We've already received Board of Health approval. So we've submitted a similar plan to this, just showing more information relative to the sewer tie-ins, the work within the buffer zone. Um, so the work within the buffer zone is actually very minimal. It's really just a sewer line. Everything else is outside the buffer zone. Um, but we have already received, uh, an order of conditions from them.
Okay. Other questions? So, yeah, just, are all of these side yards, um, I know the back and the front would be, is the, uh, both side yards, other than the one on that one side, which as the building inspector said, you created when you split? Um, are the, the other side is, uh, meets requirements?
The front, the right side and the rear yard were in compliance with all those setbacks.
Okay. And the height, we have already talked about.
Correct, exactly.
So it's, when you, when you subdivided that single property into two, you only, you only have one setback on the property that you're looking relief from?
Correct.
That's, you only have one side yard, side yard setback that is an issue?
Correct, right.
Okay. Other questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay.
Public comment.
Yeah. Thank you.
I was just gonna say it.
Um, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Please come up to the mic, give your name and address.
My name's Greg Crowdo. I live at 82 Laurel Lane, um, which is a couple of houses down to the right when you're facing the lake. Uh, the question I have is, I was a little surprised when I checked out the plans, um, that there were no plans for the house in the original application, but more surprised that it was a duplex. And I don't know if I completely understand the answer to the question of, is a duplex allowed on this, on this property? Is this the last step? If you approve this, is it a done deal? Is a duplex being built? Or is there another step? Because it sounds like there's a loophole to build a duplex.
They would have to go back to the planning board one more time, I believe. Correct?
Um, actually, it's a by right use in that district.
What's that?
It's a, excuse me, it's a by right use. So no planning board, uh, Board of Appeals approvals are required to do a duplex. They won't have to submit plans to the building inspector and even do a building permit based upon that design, but it's a by right.
Okay.
So a duplex is, is allowed?
It is allowed.
On that piece of property?
Uh, it, it's allowed in that diso, in that district of.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's a non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming structure that.
Okay, understood.
It is.
That, that was my primary concern. My secondary concern, because I've been here doing the same process for my home, was when you have a non-conforming house and you're going to make it more non-conforming, an important thing is the elevations. It's not just that you're on the same footprint, but I thought it was the height of walls from the property line that's non-conforming, which is our, which are important details in, in the process. And I, I, I heard it's 25 to 35. I think the structure now is a, is a structure with shallow porches, so it'd be from 10 feet versus 12 feet to 35 feet. So I saw a lot of these details are omitted from the application, which in honesty, I could care less about. I'm more concerned about this property becoming a duplex and the one next to it becoming a duplex. Four families living on a quarter acre, half acre, I don't know what 18,000 square feet turns out to be. Uh, as a rental properties, that's my concern. Because I live three houses down and there'll be now four families potentially living on this piece of land that's very small.
All right.
On a quiet dead end street. That's my concern, whether it has any legal bearing or not, I don't know, but that's, that's my concern. And I think there'd be more people here tonight if they realized there was a duplex being built and that potentially there could be another duplex being built right next to it in the future.
Mm-hmm. Understand. Um, as far as the height, the duplex, um, they're saying that, that's not violation of the, uh, bylaw. They do have the, uh, the height. There is a, there is a height restriction in Lunenburg that you're talking about.
Right, right. But I, it's the variance is what I was referring to, the height versus the distance from the property line, I thought was a, a key factor, but that's not, that wasn't outlined and discussed, but that's probably something you.
It is, all the, all the setbacks are, but what he's saying, what they're telling us is in what we're looking at, they meet all the setbacks, including height, except that one side yard setback, which is to the right of the house.
Right, that's the one that's in question, correct, yeah.
From the road.
Okay.
So they, they meet all the others. And, you know, that, that's.
Okay. Just now looking forward to four rental properties located on a tiny piece of land, two houses down from my house.
Well, I think the.
That's my, that's my concern.
I haven't looked at the other one. I haven't looked at, I mean, I looked at it, but I didn't study the other one because this, this, it isn't before us. However, when that one comes before us, we'll be doing the same thing. So if they didn't leave enough, that would be the same thing, non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. And we, we would have to do the same thing.
It'd be the same situation.
And if it wasn't violation at that time.
But they have the right to do it. They have the right to do it, two, duplex on both properties.
Not, not unless they go through the same processes.
This process?
Yes.
Okay.
But the planning board also.
Right, right. Okay.
And conservation.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments from the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Richard Myu, 88 Laurel Lane, uh, longtime resident. I go back to when the Dexters owned that property and, uh, have been in the house that is in question, which is a long time ago, but boy, that's a small footprint, uh, to go up on, which is, is one thing, but again, if it meets things, the, the idea of, of being able to do by right without any, uh, application of zoning laws, to put a duplex on what has been historically a single-family home, single lot, is something that if it's by right, it's by right. Okay? The other thing that I have, which is concerned, this sort of echoes something of Greg's, is, is there any, yeah, this is not going to be a condo development, not going to be an apartment development. Is there any regulation in town regarding rental versus owner occupied? Are these, is the intent to build these and sell these duplexes as homes to families or is the intent to create sort of a mini rental compound on the like? Uh, and, and that would definitely, I mean, most of you, I hope, have been down the, down the lane at one time or another. I've been there 54 years. Uh, it has always been all single-family homes, very much with families, uh, nothing ever in memory built as a money-making rental property, because that really, really does change the nature of the street, changes the nature of the neighborhood. So whether there's something beyond that, that these people, you know, these, these folks want to do, uh, you know, they came in, somebody came in and bought that property at an exorbitant price, uh, back when the boom happened, which was one of the properties that was listed as, as one of the reasons why the. Uh, back when the boom happened, which was one of the properties, uh, that was listed as, as one of the reasons why the lakefront properties all went up 135 percent. Because what was, not all that much of a property sold, I think originally for 710 or something, it was, you know. So I can see why the people who own it, uh, wanna get their money back, because it was a bad deal to start with. But I really, I really hope that something can happen or be done, that if, you know, if the duplex has to go forward, that it goes forward as, as something that will be sold, owner occupied homes, and not become some sort of a, of a, a rental property. That's, that would be my main concern.
Okay, I can kind of answer some of that. Um, we can't, they can, they're, of course, they're able to rent their house just like anybody. However, if your, your main concern sounds to me like it's probably like a short-term rental situation, where people are constant, like an Airbnb, where people are constantly coming and going. Um, that is not, that is not in the use table of the town of Lunenburg.
Mm-hmm.
And anything that is not in the use table is prohibited.
Okay.
So that would not, they could not do that unless, unless, uh, it's changed, but right now, it, it would be prohibited, short-term rentals.
But I, I think that the determination comes maybe short-term, people moving in and out, but, you know, again, I, I live across from Arrive, Lunenburg. And, uh, those are not short-term, but there's a lot of turnover. And that same sort of thing, you know, rental, rental properties being what they are, and depending on what the market will bear, uh, I'm not sure what sort of long-term rental you can expect. So, I mean, I just, I, I just, I just find somehow the, uh, inclusion of rental properties in a, an old-line residential neighborhood to be something that, you know, may be allowed, but if, if it is, it's, it's an unfortunate use.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will tell you though, I am familiar with the neighborhood, because I grew up in Willem. Um, also, um, in fact, that side of the lake, you, I don't know if you remember the Roddys, when they were there, they owned a camp there, many, many years ago. And, uh, so I, I spent a lot of time on that side of Willem Lake, but that's neither here nor there, no.
Laurel Lane is a dead end.
Right.
To come to the mic?
Whereas, I don't know, I won't get too, too far down into this, but, uh, we, we have people all the time driving down the lane, I live very close to the dead end. Uh, and people come down looking for a way around, well, there is no way around from Laurel Lane.
Right.
You have to go up the crossroad and down Pine Grove and around, and that whole side of the lake is, is really a different, different ball of wax from what, from what, uh,
From the other side.
From what Laurel Lane has, has been historically, but as I say, it, it may be neither here nor there, but, you know, and I'm not gonna be around on the lake for that much longer, I would suspect. But, uh, it, it really is, it's just, it's, it's a major change, uh, to go from single-family owner occupied homes to multifamily rental properties that somebody is making money from.
I understand, thank you. Anyone else sort of like to speak? I don't think there's anyone else, nobody's still on Zoom? Okay, I'll bring it back, would you like to address any of their concerns?
Yeah, the only thing I, I, I understand his concerns, and I appreciate him showing up, uh, the two, the two neighbors showing up. That by right, two families for the whole district, not just that particular piece of property.
Yeah.
So, it can happen anywhere within that district, so, um, I just wanted to make that statement.
Right, uh, okay. Any more questions from the board? If none, I will take a motion.
Could I ask one more question?
Oh, sure.
Do I have to come up, or can I just come up?
No, you have to come up.
You got the audience at home.
I was just curious, I was just curious, with, with the zoning laws and setbacks, are they the same for single-family as duplex properties?
What's that?
Are the zoning requirements for setbacks and all that the same for two-family homes as they are for single-family homes?
I believe they are, yeah. Um, do you, would you like to address any of the comments and questions?
Always.
It's not how I wanna meet my new neighbors, by the way.
I know, I was like, say hi, hello. So, we're rebuilding directly on top of the foundation that's already there.
You have to come to the mic and talk to the board, please.
Rebuilding on top of the foundation that's already there, the house that's there is uninhabitable. Um, it, it's in disrepair and non-conforming in many different ways, the house itself. So rebuilding-
You have to direct-
Sorry, so rebuilding would, would help make the property livable, um, and not extending past the footprint is part of it. The other thing is, I don't know why you couldn't find the plans online, I apologize, um, it's, it's two three-bedroom houses. So this is not a, you know, multiple-bedroom situation where we're, you know, trying to get rent from people, we wanna live in one of the units. Um, so we're just trying to make something that's actually habitable, that's, that's the big part of it.
So basically, you plan on living there yourself?
Mm-hmm.
In one unit, and you're gonna rent one unit?
I don't know if we're gonna rent or sell the other-
What's that?
Not sure if we're gonna rent or sell the other unit yet.
Oh, okay, so it could be either or?
Could be either or.
Okay.
That brings up another question I had, is-
Absolutely.
If it's a duplex-
Go back to the mic.
If it's a duplex, just talking about the one house or one property, can you sell half the duplex?
Yes.
Okay, even if, even though it's the same lot, you can sell, that's what, that's what I thought?
Yes.
Okay, and then you've got the other property, which you could do the same or do whatever you want with?
Correct, but that's not on the docket today.
No, I got you, yeah.
Okay. I got you.
Yeah, and I mean, it's gonna be different, I don't know what it is, 'cause like I said, we haven't seen the plans, but it may, it may be a completely different situation on that one.
Uh, so also, the, the lot was owned by one person, and it previously was owner occupied and rented.
Sure.
Um, so-
I know it will.
Okay, so there, there already was a rental property there.
Yes.
That's not a new-
Right, just not on the lot you're on.
The one next door, actually, the one I'm on.
Oh, it is?
Yes, she lived at, uh, B and rented A.
On the plans, on the plans, it's 70 and rented 68.
She lived in 70 and rented 68, and we're rebuilding 68.
Okay.
So, that, that use, that, that concern, it already was that.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I ask a question, just for clarity? The, you live in 70, and the unit that's gonna come down and be replaced by the duplex is at A and B 68?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's good news, owner occupied, that's better than, uh, you know, owner an hour away and-
Yeah.
People coming in and out and craziness happening, 'cause I already experienced that with the previous owner.
Yes.
I'm glad I asked you to come back.
Thank you, yeah, I was just gonna walk down the road and tell you, so, okay.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
All right, thank you.
Um, excuse me-
Sorry.
If I can ask her, um-
Excuse me, one more?
Yes.
One more question.
Okay, I didn't get to see the plans that you submitted here, um, but for this new house, new property, um, it's a duplex, but, um, what are the bedroom and room constructions, can you summarize that?
So it'll be three bedrooms, three bedrooms, three bathrooms.
In each?
In each.
Three floors?
Three floors, the top floor is just a loft, so it's just half-story reclaimed attic space.
So what's the approximate square footage of each unit?
Seventeen hundred square feet? Roughly? So the first floor, um, when you walk in, has one bedroom or office, a bathroom, that's a three-quarter powder room, living room and kitchen. Go up the stairs, there's two bedrooms, one is a suite with a en suite bathroom and clo- and master closet, laundry and another full bathroom. And then go up the stairs again, and it's just a loft space, because we're doing a cathedral ceiling, so we have a, an extra living space area. So we're envisioning like a home office or something up there.
And a full cellar run underneath the whole thing?
Just a crawl space.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And the, and the loft spaces for both units or just the one, each unit has a loft space?
Each unit has a loft space, they're exactly the same, just mirrored. Um, the demising wall in between, uh, is the, the mirroring point.
So, and I apologize, is this, I can't see on the structure and I couldn't see on the plans, what is the approximate dimensions of the existing home?
The existing-
Thirty by?
Yeah, it's thirty by forty?
I don't think it's that big.
It's not quite that big, but we're staying on the exact same footprint.
Each floor is thirteen seventy-six.
Okay.
That's for the two?
Yeah, yeah, that's a single, yeah, footprint.
The posed or existing?
Existing.
Existing, thirteen?
The, the foundation is in good shape, uh, we've had our structural engineer out, and we're just rebuilding on that exactly as it is, so we're not increasing the footprint. Um, the crawl space that's there, we're taking all of the HVAC, um, stuff that's down there now, making it a conditioned crawl space, uh, and basically just putting our floor right on top of it.
Mr. Chair, I got a question, we were just going through the bylaws a little bit, so, um, I do not understa- I do, have, have you already gone in front of the planning board and got approval for multi-family dwelling?
We didn't need to, because it's by right a duplex in residence zone A.
I, okay, just, we're not seeing that during the bylaws, that's why.
I am.
Can, do you have where it is?
Section?
Okay.
Um, I have a copy of it here, if you want.
Sure, I'll have the slide.
Sure. And, and just to kinda clarify, uh, my clients are architects and builders, so, um-
I'm not working, I'm not doing that, you know, I'm just asking where you found it, so.
No, it says right here, multi-family.
It's there.
Special, special permit.
No, it's letting a special permit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see it, two twenty, yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah, it's there.
All right.
Two families, not multi-families.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Any more questions?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the special permit, dimensional variation or reconstruct a structure on the same footprint of a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll say it.
We have a motion, a second, I'll call for a vote. James?
Aye.
Hans?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Okay, so the special permit is granted. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, the coordinators of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer, to ensure compliance with any conditions. Non-compliance to such conditions may result in a revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have recorded it at the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and the special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your new-
Thank you very much for your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, do you want any copies of the plans, because they're not gonna save.
Yes. No, thank you.
You want it?
I don't, I really don't need them. Yeah, I think that her coming up and explaining helped.
Yeah, it did.
Adjourn, adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, Mr. Chair, can I ask one question, question?
Sure.
Sorry, but, um, the letters that we received, um, from town council, okay, just, is that just to start the process? Or our rebuttal to whatever?
That, those are the, the, well, I think you got two, you got the water?
Correct, I got the water and the sewer.
And you got the attorney costas?
Yes.
Yeah, and those are their filings, um, as I understand it with HAC.
Okay.
Okay, so, so they've gotta go through, HAC hasn't rendered a decision at this time.
I, and we haven't talked to town council.
Right, but those, those, so what they'll do now, is my understanding is that they will, pretty much, once a decision is made, then they'll decide from there. Whoever they decide for, it'll probably be appealed.
Okay, all right, that was, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
But, um, the arguments sounded good to me.
Did that, when did that get sent out, I missed, I mean, missed that?
Monday.
Oh, Monday, oh, it's takeable.
Sixty-
No, maybe Tuesday, because they had a meeting Monday, the 12th.
Yeah.
And I think it-
It was, it was-
It later in that day or something, maybe Monday or Tuesday.
Monday, because I went there too, because I could see.
Okay, that's right, yeah, I printed it out for Al, yeah, Tuesday, yeah.
Nine pages for the water and sixty pages, or something like that for the-
Yeah, it was less than that, but it was a lot.
Yeah.
And I read the whole damn thing.
Oh, wow.
Good bedtime reading material.
Tells you what kinda boring life like.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.